... And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Member Anderson?
Here.
Vice President Gibson?
Reverend.
Member Greco?
Here.
Member Swallow?
Here.
President Suedo?
Here.
Do I have a motion to approve the March minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Do I have a motion to pay the town bills, water, and sewer?
I'll make the motion to pay the bills.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the fund and appropriation reports for March?
I'll make the motion to approve the reports.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Correspondence, Tammy?
Okay, the first thing I have is a letter from Northwestern Professional Studies for Chief Earl Mayo. Dear Chief Mayo, on behalf of the Center for Public Safety and all of the classes of the School of Police Staff in Command present, I would like to thank you for taking time from your busy schedule to speak at your graduation, especially on such short notice. Your stimulating and thought-provoking words were most important to the occasion and very well received. Your act of participation truly highlighted the importance and significance of the graduation ceremony. We greatly appreciate the support you have demonstrated for the law enforcement professionals from S.P.S.C.O. classes number 538, 546, 548, 549, 553, 554, 558, 562, 564, 566, 572, 576, 581, 582, 583, 584, 588, and 595 at Northwestern University Center for Public Safety. If the Center can ever be of service in the future, please do not hesitate to call my office. Michelle Camden, Director.
Very nice.
Congratulations. Next on the list, I would like to give recognition to the ladies that work in the Water Department. In the past few months, I have had some family stuff going on, deaths of my family, which I've not been able to be at work, and when I'm not there, and also at my conference. The ladies have greatly stepped up, and they have done an excellent job. They have learned, you know, they have been doing the deposit, they have been checking positive pay when I'm not there, and I have to say that I have complete trust in them to do this when I am not there. I feel comfortable. And I also would like to recognize the utility workers. We're very short-staffed with them. They've been doing an excellent job also. So I would like to ask council if we can pick a day and do lunch for the ladies in the office and the utility workers.
Yeah, and if I have council approval, I'd like for that to be paid out of the rainy day fund. It won't amount to that much for the people, because I don't know what else we could take it out of, so...
What time tomorrow?
Not tomorrow. She hasn't set a date yet. So if...
I'll take it out of petty cash for water instead of hitting the rainy day fund.
You think it would be enough, though? I don't know what they're gonna order.
Yeah.
We can do rainy day fund, we can do petty cash, but if it exceeds that amount, then we'll take it out of rainy day fund. Do I have a motion to approve that?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Sharon, give me those.
Okay. Ordinance 2025-06, Additional Appropriation Police Equipment Fund, First Reading.
An ordinance of the Town of New Chicago, Lake County, Indiana, authorizing additional appropriations in the 2025 budget, donations, police equipment fund. Whereas it has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than was originally appropriated in the annual budget in the donations, police equipment fund of the town, and whereas the town council is aware that the fund currently holds sufficient cash balance to support the requested additional appropriation. Now therefore be it ordained by the town council of the Town of New Chicago, Lake County, Indiana, that it is hereby provided and ordered for the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sum of money is appropriated out of the fund named, subject to laws governing the same. So it is Fund 2301, donations, police equipment fund, $120,000. And this is just a transfer of the donation that was already made, but this donation was in the general fund, so this separate fund had to be created to transfer this money.
This is the money from Lake County?
Yes, it is.
It'll have its own line of...
Okay, yes.
Okay.
You need a motion for that?
Yes.
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Okay, do you guys want to set a date for a second reading on the ordinance 2025-06? If approved, didn't we approve it? What date do you guys want to meet?
I have to give at least a 10-day notice for the second reading in the paper, so...
Tammy, why don't you text everybody?
Okay.
Once you do that, and tell, give us a couple dates.
Okay.
Okay, and we can meet just at the school, guys, in the other room there. Okay, Resolution 2025-02, Transfer to Rainy Day Fund, Day.
Okay, so I did give everybody a letter from Sandra Dalton explaining how they came up with the number that they came up with to transfer the funds. This is Town of New Chicago, Lake County, Indiana, transfers to rainy day, whereas the town council of the Town of New Chicago desires to be prepared for the next major emergency, pandemic, or financial recession. Whereas the town council of the Town of New Chicago has previously established a rainy day fund as a planning mechanism for preparing for unexpected challenges to delivering services to our citizens. Whereas Indiana Code 36-1-8-5.1 provides that in any fiscal year, a political subdivision may transfer after December 31st, 2024, not more than 10% of the political subdivision's annual budget for that fiscal year, adopted under IC 6-1.1-17 to the rainy day fund. And whereas the town council of New Chicago has identified unassigned fund balances from which it transferred to a portion of, I'm sorry, from which to transfer a portion to the rainy day fund. Therefore be it resolved by the New Chicago Town Council to transfer $80,000 from the general fund, 1101, to the rainy day fund, 4438, passed and adopted by the Town Council of the Town of New Chicago, Indiana, this day of April 9th, 2025.
Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2025-02?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Resolution 2025-03, DLGF.
Town of New Chicago, Lake County, Indiana, annual contract uploads and affirmations. Whereas Indiana Code 5-14-3.8-3.5 requires that various contracts entered into by a governmental unit be uploaded through the Indiana Gateway Transparency Portal. And whereas specifically subsection 3.5D requires that contracts related to the provision of fire services or emergency medical services, or to enter into with another unit or entity that provide fire service or emergency medical services, contracts be uploaded through the same Indiana Gateway Portal, Gateway. And whereas Indiana Code 6-1.1-17-5.4 requires an attestation by the executive town council related to the upload of the contracts through Gateway. And whereas the Department of Local Government Finance, DLGF, has modified the existing file transmission platform in Gateway where these certain contracts are to be uploaded to now include an affirmation related specifically to fire service contracts and emergency medical service contracts. And whereas the affirmation which states that the contracts have been uploaded is to be filled out by the executive of each political subdivision. And whereas under IC 5-14-3.8-3.5E, the executive body may, by resolution, delegate the uploaded responsibility and attestation authority to another individual, and under subsection 3.5F, then submit said resolution to the DLGF no later than five days after passage. And whereas the affirmation was due on March 2nd, 2025, and whereas the clerk treasurer, knowing the affirmation was due, and that the executive did not have access to the DLGF platforms, went ahead and uploaded the required contracts, and submitted the required affirmation on behalf of the town council and the Town of New Chicago. And whereas the town council wishes to affirm the actions of the clerk treasurer on the town's council's behalf, and cause this resolution to be retroactive to February 28th, 2025. And now therefore be it resolved by the town council of the Town of New Chicago, Lake County, Indiana, that the town council grants permission as it delegates to the clerk treasurer for the purpose of uploading the contracts each year until otherwise rescinded. The town council grants permission as it delegates to the clerk treasurer for the purpose of the related affirmation each year until otherwise rescinded. The town council declares this resolution to be retroactive to February 28th, 2025, passed and adopted by the town council of the Town of New Chicago, Indiana, this 9th day of April, 2025.
Does anyone have any questions on this? Is that like the ambulance?
That's for our whole board ambulance. I uploaded that.
Okay, because we don't have the privilege to get on Gateway, so that's why we vote for the clerk treasurer to do it. So do I have a motion to approve ordinance, wait a minute, a Resolution 2025-03?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Departments, police?
Last one, reword. Pay attention, 47 were in fractions, and ordinance, 43 warnings, we got 20 month bills, so last month, we had two vehicles in the shop, this month, another vehicle in the shop, all the lights in the back, all factory lights, also John working, he had the lights in the back this morning, luckily he got the lights back before someone rented the backup. As you guys know here, after 22 long weeks, I finally graduated from the Northwood School of Police Staff Command. It's one of the most prestigious law enforcement command schools in the country, and the most academically challenging, so, but I want to thank Stu Bachman for taking time and starting there, fighting Chicago traffic, coming over, that's important, to serve Northwood School of Police, somebody from down there.
Some of us would have been there, but we haven't, so...
I'm thankful for that. I would like the town, for elected council commission, I have two officers that are training, they're already academy certified, if they can do training, I would like to move them to a paid position. We have two open paid positions. I'd like to approve them now, they probably won't finish training till the end of the month, or begin of May, but I'd like to approve them now so that we don't have to wait some extra years to use those paid spots. One is Robbie Alnides, the other one is Alexandra Montella.
Earl, do you know at this time what hours they would be working then?
They should.
They should, so they'll give you a break?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to, Tammy, do we have money?
Yes.
We gotta find that out for two officers paid.
Yes, we do.
And their starting salary will be what?
Eighteen dollars.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the two officers to be paid, what, the end of April, you said, roughly?
After they graduate, right?
After they finish their FEO process.
Okay.
They both sent to offices or other agencies, so they know how to leave, you just gotta make sure they're maybe relaxed, tomorrow, I don't know, but at least we see it.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Okay, thanks, Earl. Police Commissioner Joe, no, that, no, John's not here, you guys, they didn't have a meeting, I'm sorry.
We didn't have a meeting. Whatever he said.
Joe, well, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I did everything, but I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Once you guys know where I applied for the end of JAP grant last year, that was awarded to us around $92,800, basically $93,000.
How, $93,000?
Just sorry, $93,000, $92,800. No, I did the grant, I did it for the purchase of our news radios, especially, they gave us 12 used radios, but they were being in the same condition, only different between their radios and the radios we have now, but they're still in a little bit better condition. So our quote for the radios came out to $110,000, so we want to use the $93,000 that we got from the grant, which we have an award, I think our center town just said we can go here to purchase, and the remaining guns is paid out of the money from Calcutta.
Okay.
And then also out of that, we want to pay for our body worn cameras, which is $23,000.
That's out of that too, Earl?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. That's it?
That's it.
Okay, Joe?
Let's see, Saturday, Saturday, we will be down at the park, or Sunday, I mean, down at the park, taking care of the basketball court for the egg hunt. The next week, we'll be taking a rabbit down to the park for Easter egg hunt. Tuesday, I will be attending a county fire chief meeting, and they also called a special meeting under MABUS 207, I will be attending that also on Tuesday. And then Thursday, I will be attending 911 Commission meeting, and other than that, uh...
Gonna be a busy guy.
Yeah, we're moving, we're moving right along, we're okay, that's all.
Okay, Joe, thanks. Town manager?
Maybe 90 McKinley has some kind of trailer there that they're hauling skids on, or...
Yeah, it's a trailer, it's a truck with a trailer. They were on the street, but I guess now they're on the easement, the sidewalk, and it's got like a kind of an excavator or something on the trailer, so, and it's been there for weeks, so...
Just, just, um, mayor, like, is the trailer the problem, or where is it parked at?
It's where he's parked at. He can't, he can't park in the street or on the easement and sidewalk.
Okay.
You know, I mean, if he wants to park it in his driveway, we can't do nothing about it, but they don't have a driveway, I don't think, here.
Okay.
Or a small one, Earl.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Also, food bank, April 25th at 11 o'clock. I need some help.
I won't be there.
What day is it?
That's a Friday.
April 25th.
April 25th, and we set this up two and a half months ago, so I told them we would be there.
You said over the box, too?
11 o'clock, yeah, so you guys can be there 10:30 like normal. They gave us new reports, now we don't have to do the address, but I didn't do the address anyway, just their name and stuff.
And city, we used to put the city, I think they were from.
Yeah, okay.
They didn't put address, but we put the city.
But he sent me the new form, so I've already printed them out, so we'll be ready to go.
Let me ask you, Sue, where'd you put the soap?
Soap on counter. It's there, I know where it is.
Oh, is that where it is?
Yeah.
Not in the bathroom?
No.
There's a bar or something, or...
No, I've got that jury cleaning supplies.
No, I didn't put that there.
The soap's on the back desk there, by the turn-ons and the shut-offs and stuff, so, we know where that's at with the new form, so, okay, that's all I have under this one.
Okay. Nothing else you have under town manager?
Nothing under town, no.
Park boards, Joe?
All right, park board, we did get the container order today.
Oh.
For the parks, that should be here April 16th, so we'll be able to get that right before Easter, and get the bathrooms and stuff cleared out of all the garden and park stuff before Easter hits. And thank you to Tony for getting the thoughts and stuff in working today. We also, we do have a confirm for the lunchware, it'll be 31 days, let's do a little bit, actually, it's gonna be more than 31 days.
35, I think it is.
Oh, okay, yeah, I'm just not doing math right, anyway, it'll be from June 2nd to June 27th, Monday through Friday, and July 7th to July 25th, Monday through Friday. We'll be taking, type off, of course, for the 4th of July holiday for that, and school, we started up shortly after the end date. We would like to ask, if all possible, council members could help out this year. We are able to get a grant for legacy like we did last year, we have to wait, we have to skip a year before we can go for another grant to be able to hire interns like we do this year. So any help that the council can provide would be...
What time is that?
It's from 12:00, if I'm right here, 12:00 to 12:30. Is when they'll be there for lunch, we generally, people start showing up about 11:30-ish, generally.
Yeah, we usually get there a little earlier and start cleaning stuff.
Yeah, so...
Well, you set the tables and that for the colored books.
Yeah, but sometimes it's just helpful to have an extra set of hands there, we get a lot of kit, just to, just to keep track of stuff, or to do, you know, whatever, just help kind of run things, having a dump there.
Yeah. We are still doing the 55th anniversary, we did confirm Mr. Newcomer, who is a retired Marine who supervised the building of Twin Oaks, is confirmed to come, he's gonna speak at the event, and kind of talk about, you know, what they did and how they did it. We also have confirmation for basic topics, we might have to serve food and also have new bikes, and that, I think about covers it, right, Miss Agon?
Tomorrow, we are picking up the trees from the tree branch.
Okay.
So we will have those, Morgan and I are gonna go over in the morning and take some class where we learn more than we'll ever need to know about planting trees, and then after that, then we can bring the trees back.
How many did you get?
I believe it is about 25.
Ooh.
So we're getting the, we're gonna use the park truck, the park pickup truck, and John Squire has donated some time in the use of one of his trucks, he's gonna come help also, because I just, that's all we got, Joe doesn't have a truck either, so...
And then are you, are you going to put them at the Public Works Building for now?
That was the plan, I talked to Robert George and Okie Sue, that we can just put them inside the fence there, because we've just, we've got too much inside our fenced area there, we want them to be protected.
Yeah, and that's all lit up there, too, at night.
It's a tree, no way.
Would you be surprised?
I guess, yeah, you never know. Give them a chance, but yeah, that's why we wanted them behind, behind a fence, locked up, and then we'll start working on getting them planted.
Okay.
We're doing four, I believe, on Huber, or...
Five?
Five.
Five on Huber, where the park is, so we're the, in front of the Old Town Hall, and then we're doing the 21 of them, I don't know, we're doing some cedars around the edge of the pond, and some jackpines, jackpines, and then some river birches up near the flag. So, it's all been kind of approved by the arborist, they did, they came out and did a walk-through, and they said it looks good, we've got to keep them watered.
Joe, you have your container coming?
Yes.
Did you get ahold of Robert, because he was gonna put Millings down?
Yeah, we did.
Oh, he did that already? Okay, I didn't know.
No, no, hold on, until he did that before I ordered it.
I didn't know, he had done it already.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Is that it, Joe? Or what?
So, I think it's everything we have to report.
So next...
Oh, there won't be a Shakespeare in the park this year.
Yeah.
Also, the 16th, you're having to do the baskets at the school.
Yeah, well, okay, April 12th, we're doing the park cleanup, April 16th, we're doing the baskets at the school, and then of course, April 20th is gonna be the Easter...
Acon.
April, April 19th.
April, sorry.
April 19th, 20th is actually Easter.
Yeah.
So anyone that is able to come to 16th to help pack up baskets for, what time is that?
6 o'clock.
12. If anybody wants to come out on the 12th, we are, I think we're getting some students from the school are gonna come out and help us, but it's just, just kind of cleaning up the park, maybe raking up and cleaning up and whatever, if you're gonna come out and give a little time.
Bring your raking gloves, like normal.
As I say, you can, no.
I'm banned.
You can supervise, you're, you're hurt, so...
No, the one time ended by the head concussion over there.
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
And stitches, do you have stitches?
No, just that they put staples. Okay, that's it. Okay, Plan Commission, Joe, you wanna take that?
Yeah, Plan Commission, we had a note from the office here today to, by the way, herding a lot of patients, nothing has been approved yet, they're going to come back next month with the drawings and everything, so next month, we will be most likely approving it, but we'll have to wait and see what the drawings look like, and, you know, make sure there's no utilities under there, so...
Is this to alleviate the traffic situation?
Yes.
To create? So where are they planning?
Instead of two lanes, they'll have three lanes.
Yeah.
They're adding a lane of drive-through and...
Yeah, they're, they're expanding the apron for the turnout, they're basically, so when you first turn in, you got those parking slots right there on the right, they're all available.
Good. That's crazy.
Yeah.
Come to the board, that, board.
Okay, that's it?
That was it, we left.
All right, Sue, it's up to you, Sewer.
Everything, we had a pump station that went down a while, but Robert got it repaired, and everything's going okay with it.
That's it?
Yep.
Streets?
Streets, I don't know when our bids are coming out, do you, Tammy?
No.
So, they're...
They should be coming pretty soon.
Yeah, so, we'll see them that Thursday, so we can ask them then where we're at on the preliminary or whatever for the streets, so, and everybody knows, you gotta copy what streets are getting done, so...
Fine sanitation?
Garbage, no, but I believe we have a contract due at the end of the year, so Tammy will watch for that. Oh, Sewer, excuse me, Mickey Anderson is sick, so he has his nephew and his son who's handling it for right now, so if you need anything, or to call the office, and they'll get back with us right away, so, just FYI.
Yeah, nobody, well, I don't know who has Mickey's phone number, but please do not call him.
It's on my cabinet in the back, so...
Yeah, I have it, but, you know, I, nobody needs to be bothering him right now.
Well, we're not gonna get him, we'll get...
Yeah.
One of them, so...
Oh, so it'll go to one of them?
Yeah, he wants us to call the office, and then the nephew or the son will get the phone.
I have his personal phone number.
Yes.
So I won't call him.
He's not gonna answer it.
No, I won't call him, yeah, that's what I'm saying, I didn't know if anybody else did. Water, Sue?
Okay, you guys know Indiana American doing a water increase next month, what's your pleasure?
What do you mean, what is our pleasure? We have no control for it.
No, we have to advertise, we have to give the accountant in, we gotta...
I know.
Do all that stuff, so...
And I don't know about Bill Decker, how he's doing, have you talked to him?
No, not this week, so... No, not this week, so, but, anyway, so you guys need to be seeing. I don't even know what the rate increase was now.
I don't either, I don't know what the rate is. I don't think it's out yet, is it?
Oh, yeah, it was out last year when we did the first two. They told us how much it was going to go up.
But they were, we weren't sure on that, it wasn't a positive.
They were sure on it.
Well, but it was still up in the air, if they could get that.
So, we'll have to probably have a special meeting on that or whatever, so we'll talk to Carl on that and see what we're going to do, but we don't want to wait too long, so...
And then we have passed through.
We're just going to do a pass-through, yeah.
We haven't passed through on that.
But he's still got to do the...
Well, yeah, you got to do all of the computers.
I don't know, when are you going to have your meeting? Tomorrow?
It has to be this year, I'll say it soon.
It has to be May, May, so, that's when it's going in. I don't know, we'll check with Carl and then we'll see what he thinks. Okay, SRF, our loan, okay? We have six-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand five hundred dollars left over.
How much?
Six-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand dollars left over, five hundred. Okay, we have no help. I have no meter readers, I have two, okay? So, another great idea in my head, okay? I was thinking, could we use some of this money and do redimatics? So, I called I, the IFA, talked to Amy. Amy said, "You can if you're going to call it a meter replacement." Okay? So, she's going to get, she talked to her bosses, bosses said, "Oh, wait a minute, you have to call it that because the, um, SRF loan and the State Board of Accounts will denew if you call it something else."
And basically, it's the same thing.
Yeah, it's just word is different. So, Robert did get, um, some quotes here, and to replace three thousand meters, which we only have like twenty-four eighty-two, is going to be six-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand seven-hundred-and-seventy dollars. But that does not cover who's going to install it.
Yeah. And that could be another big one. Is, what does, um, well, let me explain, what does Indiana American use? Do they?
They have redimatics.
Redimatics? Okay.
So, anyway, Amy's going to get with Matt, talk to him, because if we do use this money, even though it's part of the original loan, we still have to do a preliminary engineering, we have to advertise, so everybody gets money, okay? And we go from there. But if nothing else, maybe we can do part of it, start with part of it, but we're not losing this money. We're not, we're not sending it back to the state for somebody else to get, so, anyway...
So, we could do a partial, like, yeah, half of them, you know, like the town in Chicago?
Get out of them. That's what I think. So, Matt's going to, Amy's going to get with Matt, talk to him, and then we'll throw it around. But I think she told me in a month's time, we're, we're making like a hundred-and-fifty thousand in interest, so this is helping us a little bit, but...
And this would really help the guys out tremendously.
So, anyway, I just want you to know we're looking into that and see, even if we have to, when we have extra money, the last time, we bought hydrants, we bought pipe, we bought valves, that's why we have this extra money, because they use what our equipment up and that's what saved it, so... Anyway, I'm throwing it out there for you guys to look at.
Is there any other places you could get bids from, or...
Well, I, this, no, this is the utility supply, this is where we buy our supplies from. But we would have to bid it out in order for a contractor to come in and do it, so... And Robert said right now Monster is doing it.
You have a contractor?
Yeah, they have a contractor, so... I don't, Robert will check into it, but Aaron from Utility Supply will know, but said, "We're the last entity that does not have redimatics." All the new meters are set up for redimatics, you can't even buy an old meter anymore, so the new ones, the old ones were ninety-four dollars per meter, they're now two hundred dollars per meter, so, because they're set up for radio reads, so... Anyway, I'm throwing that out there, so you guys...
I know, Robert said he needs four, um, valves.
That's forty grand, that's nothing.
Yeah, they're ten thousand apiece, but he, well, there's more than that that probably needs, but these are the four he knows still does not work at all, so...
Anyway, so we'll figure out, we'll have, um, H and G paid off in May for the three-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand dollars that we, um, had to have that water line fixed, and then we'll go from there, so... And that's all I have under water right now.
Okay. Stormwater?
Stormwater, we fixed the drain over on Harrison Street that had collapsed, so, the guys did, I didn't, so, anyway, so... That's all repaired over there where we had the main break at, um, Donna's house, so, and then the storms, the center, or the stormwater thing collapsed, so that's all fixed there, so, we got a blacktop, so...
I know, Robert is trying to, um, get a grant for dry wells, because there's a few places in town that needs them, and it's through Reggie, so hopefully he'll, we'll get that. Old business? New business? Legal report?
No.
Announcements? Any other business come before the council? Open forum?
You know, it was, brought to my attention that Clint Treasure wants cameras in our office.
No, I, I...
At the school, I don't think that would...
No, we can't do that. We, in our new building, we will probably have cameras, but we can't put no holes, no nothing in this school building, we can't do nothing.
Do you need holes to do that, Joe?
Depends on the type of cam, type of camera. I mean, I got, you know, if it's a small enough camera, it could just be essentially three M, you know?
Double sided stick?
Yeah, like a double sided sticky three M up there.
You're using like a blink camera or something, very light.
So, I mean, for the lighting of the camera, there'd be nothing that needs to be drilled.
What are those cost?
You know, what are we looking to utilize them for?
Well, we had them in the other town hall, and since I'm responsible for all of the money, and it falls on me, I would like to have a camera in there.
I, I can look to see what's available, um, you know, see if there's something that will work that doesn't need to be drilled in, that can be recorded.
Joe, I got that tape, is that what you're trying to do, you need? Stick it there, stick it there, no holes, no nothing.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we've got to make sure that tape can come off then, Joe.
Right, yeah.
School board, get approval for her to take, drill in the wall.
So, how much we looking at? Hundred bucks, two hundred bucks?
If I had to take a guess, I mean, just, really, as far as cameras go, I would recommend one that is facing Tammy's area, one that is back by the windows facing towards the door, so that it sees people coming in. And I would really suggest a third...
Now, you got to watch with, which way you're facing that camera, towards the, where they're coming in, not coming to the office.
Yeah, yeah, so Tammy's would be...
Because you can't have nothing facing to the east side, because you've got kids over there.
Right.
At the end of the hall.
So, one, one would be, um, you know, up against, you know, the wall that has the windows looking out towards their little playground.
Yeah.
It would be there looking down at Tammy's area. Second one would be further down, looking at the...
Who's coming in the building?
Who's, well, no, who's coming into the water department, not into the building.
Yeah.
Just into the water department itself.
Just the water depart, just the water department, not the building.
Right.
Or the front desk, or something, I want to come in and pay the bill.
Yeah.
The only ones that come in there is the water people, want to pay the water bill.
Right, yeah, so, and the only thing we would see at the hallway is the hallway that's all cordoned off from the students anyway. So...
Yeah, but you can't have a camera facing the east, because you've got kids in the hallway down there.
Right.
Okay, so the other way...
It would not be in the hallway, when you come out of the water department, you're staring at a wall.
Yeah, yeah.
The camera would be staring at that same wall.
Okay, I got you now.
The other one, I would recommend the thirds, to put it in with Mary.
Yes, that's what I was just going to say.
And have it, you know, the same as the water department, just have it behind her facing...
Joe, will you look into it and give us some price?
If I had to take a guess, three hundred or less.
Where are you going to take that out of?
Out.
Well, I know, Tammy, where would you, where would you pull that money from?
Probably a miscellaneous funds, don't you think?
You can't bring it out of safety.
I have, I have miscellaneous funds, uh, CEDIT can be used for anything, not KJ, but CEDIT. Uh, so, I could find gaming, gaming can be used for anything, the money we get from that.
So, I'll, I'll just, I'll send it to the council. I'll try, I'll keep it at three hundred or lower, about, you know, of course, trying to look.
So, we can expedite this, get it going, this one. Can we make a motion to get the cameras not to exceed three hundred dollars? I'll make that motion.
I'm waiting up numbers.
Yeah, let them get a...
I mean, it's definitely three hundred, that's...
I, that's my guess.
I can call everybody and ask them if, what...
And where's it going to go to?
The, so, that, I got to look at what's available.
Where's it going to go to, the cloud, or, I mean, who's got his phone, or what?
Most likely it would be cloud, well...
Oh, that's right, where's it?
Yeah, most, most cameras, all cameras, it's not, it doesn't have a...
Storage, yes.
DVR, DVR, it stores in cloud, and then you, everybody can download an app, and then you have editing set up, view from view, the file, view, delete, you can edit, so... Basically, the only people that would probably have access to see it would be Tammy.
That's fine.
You, as county president.
No, I don't want access to it.
No, no.
You as county manager.
Nope.
No, just Tammy.
Tammy and whoever the administrator is.
Which would then be me.
Yeah.
So...
But, Earl, you, you, I don't understand, okay, because you've got these cameras, they go to the cloud. You have to have a DVR or...
No, no, it's just a cloud service, it just, it's a separate service.
But do you pay for that service?
Generally, yes, that's why I have to look it up.
Yeah, I look into that, because it's a monthly charge. Okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll look it up.
Okay. Because I think, the thing of it is, my thing is, because when I told Tammy before, no, no cameras, because I can't see spending the expense now and if we don't use them in our other building.
Well, and we still need something, regardless if we use them in the other building or not, you need something expensive. What should be going into that new building would be far more costly than this.
And then what will you do with these then?
Use them anywhere, we could put them in the fire department, keep an eye on it.
Put them in fire stations.
Put them in the, you know, we could use them at the parks in some way, you know? It, you know, there's other, there's other things we could do, like we could use them at the, uh, uh, Public Works Building, you know, we could use them on...
Well, there is cameras there already.
Yeah, or the other, um, well, there's nothing that, you know...
Oh, the pole barn?
Yeah, that's all I was thinking of, but...
Yeah, I don't think we have...
That would be kind of pointless without...
I think they stowed the chipper from there.
Joe decided we'll put them in the fire station.
Okay, there we go.
All right, check into it, Joe.
I'll check into it, that'll set the, set it up.
I mean, I'm not opposed to it, I just want the cost of it.
Yeah.
You know, and the monthly cost, you know?
Well, you, you know me, I'll give you the whole breakdown.
All right. Open, oh, I did that, open forum. Comments from the board members? Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Make a motion, yeah.
Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye. Aye. The motion carries.
Well, Bill, we'll see you in the Easter egg...